And that's why we had everything on the agenda that would allow us to accomplish that, but we decided to take them up on the 50/50 offer. Anyway, it had developed ahead now to the end of the summer and I was contacted and asked to just to allow the attorneys for the village and for the township to work on a possibility. The upshot was that township had decided that they would be willing to take over jurisdiction of 65th Street, which would be great because then they could, they could maintain it, they could pave it, they could allow it, it would still remain within the confines of Indian Head Park, but they would have jurisdiction in the road. So I asked council to work with the township council, which he did, and we've got to the point where the attorneys from both sides need at least input from, from us as to what we want to do because as smooth as it was starting to look like it was going to sail, we have hit a storm in the form of the Illinois Department of Transportation. And I've asked council personnel to work on it, if he could bring us up to date on where we are, what, what problem is now. Yes, with regard to a transfer jurisdiction of that portion of roadway over to Lyons Township, there's a section of the highway code that allows such a transfer to take place. It requires the Illinois Department of Transportation to approve that jurisdictional transfer. And I've been involved with the exact same scenario in another municipality that we represent and have found that the Department of Transportation will not approve that type of a jurisdictional transfer. And part of the reason why they won't approve that is because of the way that motor fuel tax dollars are distributed to municipalities and townships. Motor fuel tax dollars under the motor fuel tax law are distributed to municipalities based on population, whereas motor fuel tax dollars are distributed to townships based on the length of the roadway that the township highway commissioner has jurisdiction over. So if you think about this piece of roadway, since giving up this piece of road won't affect the village's population, the amount of motor fuel tax revenue that the village receives will remain the same. However, even though it's just a small block, the amount that the Lyons Township road district will receive theoretically will increase because the length of roadway that the Lyons Township Highway Commissioner will be responsible for will increase. The Illinois Department of Transportation looks at this as being quote unquote double dipping, that we're doubling up on the amount of motor fuel tax dollars that are distributed to our area, therefore they don't want to approve these types of agreements. So it seemed like an easy thing just to turn it over to Lyons Township, but the highway department, the Illinois Department of Transportation won't approve these agreements. I've tried to lay out to them sections of the Illinois Constitution as well as sections of the highway code that I believe authorizes these type of cooperative agreements between neighboring jurisdictions and neighboring township and a municipality. However, I've been negotiating with them since early summer in the southern municipality and to date, they have not given approval to such a transfer. So consequently, and I've discussed this with Ed King, the attorney for Lyons Township, and he was going to go back to the township and discuss with them these facts, and he asked that I do the same to the village board. The scenarios basically that you're left with then is to go ahead and send a jurisdictional transfer application down to the Department of Transportation, knowing that they'll probably reject it, in which case you would then either have to accept their decision that they wouldn't allow the jurisdictional transfer, or you would have to file a mandamus or injunctive suit against the Department of Transportation and try to persuade a court that the jurisdictional transfer is authorized under the Illinois Constitution and under the statutes of the state of Illinois. The other option would be a disconnection of that strip of land from the village of Indian Head Park. In order to do that, there's a section of the Illinois municipal code that allows such type of jurisdiction, disconnection of jurisdiction, that would require a written petition signed by the owners of record representing a majority of the people that have ownership of that land. And since it was a dedicated roadway, even though it's a public road, it would be the landowners who will immediately abut that street. So you'd need a majority of them to sign petition. You'd also need to have a surveyor survey the land that's going to be disconnected from the village because ultimately a plat of disconnection will be required to be recorded with the county recorder. Once the majority of people in that area would sign such a petition, it would then be brought to the village board and the village board would then, if they agreed with disconnecting that property, would pass an ordinance disconnecting it and approving a plat of disconnection. It would be required that the village conduct title searches to make sure that we, the people who sign the petition are actually the owners of the property. That, while it seems relatively straightforward, again, I think would be more expensive than where you were at before, the $15,000 figure. So at this point, I either need to have, you indicated to me you want to do something, you want to do nothing, you want to do any of the above, but I told Ed King, the attorney, that after the board trustees, I had some time to think it over and decide what they wanted to do, I would get back to him and advise him on the village's fees.
Either one of those two options would incur cost on the Department of Village?
Clearly a lawsuit against the Department of Transportation should they deny the application of jurisdictional transfer will definitely cost attorney's fees to prosecute. And I believe the cost of the surveyor as well as the title searches for the various landowners that abut that property, I believe your fees will approach close to approximately $15,000.
It still doesn't get the street paved if we don't, we're not successful, right?
Well, disconnection, I mean, that would clearly relieve you of the obligation to pave it, and that would turn it over to the township. There's no question about that. That would solve the problem, but again, it would just be the cost and the dollar.
And then the lawsuit or the injunctive relief would require legal fees and costs in order to pursue with no guarantee outcome?
And I clearly believe that would be the most expensive option. I, I think that the disconnection would be less expensive, but still approach what you're, had originally ordered against previously.
Trustees' question?
How many homes, do you, you mean?
Trustee O'Loughlin?
How many homes abut to the, that street, or ten?
So for the town, Sam, do you have any idea?
Oh, there's at least six properties and a couple in Acacia, so about eight.
Is there any precedent, I mean, has anybody sued the Department of Transportation before? A and B, might this other village want to sue and save us, set some precedent for us in the future?
The other municipality might, it's really up to them. I don't believe, you know, there's no, clearly no appellate case indicating that whether anyone suing the circuit court has not been reported, that I don't know, but I don't believe, I don't believe so.
Do we, do we know if township would, would go back to square one with the same original offer they had before, split the cost and do the street?
I don't know that, but I don't know any reason why they wouldn't. But, I mean, they've not indicated that they have drawn that offer.
That seems to me like it's gambling either way. I mean, we're going to pay for it one way or the other, if we do or if we don't, so.
Maybe that's something that can accommodate that.
Yeah, it's my understanding, they, they were doing a bunch of streets, so it was, yeah, what we'll do.
Well, what I would like to, just to, well.
Just out of curiosity, so why would the fees go up to 15, why would the fee cost $15,000 anymore?
Well, if you have six or eight properties, you'd have to have title searches on every one of those properties. You'd also have a surveyor who actually have to go out there and do a plat of survey. You'd have to turn all the easements out there, and then you'd have the recording fees for the survey. It's, it's going to be, I mean, the surveyor alone, I think, is going to cost you several thousand dollars to do that survey out there, roadway survey. So I think that's why you're going to start approaching that number. I mean, it might be less, but it will.
Just to jump in, Ed was right on, there's five Indian Head Park and two incorporated or whatever is on the other side, plus that, total of five.
Maybe, maybe they could pay, you know how they were giving us an offer as far as paying half of the cost to do the streets, maybe they could pay half the cost to.
But then they would end up with the street and the whole cost. So it will, it will cost them more than just doing the 50/50s for the bucks.
But I mean, maybe, I don't, I mean, I don't know, maybe we want to close the street because, I mean, we would have to keep repairing the street all the time, going down the road, so.
Like, that was the decision that was made, is that we can't transfer this jurisdiction to the township or ask them to pay for the whole thing. And that was, our decision is to close the street in terms of it being open for vehicles, still make it a pathway or a walkway or something like that, and that would cost some money, but not like having the street and continuing to maintain it, trust me.
I think with Norm looking at, maybe if they would offer that same deal, that may make sense, either that or closing it, and I guess I don't understand the cost of that. Like you said, I think that it would be less than 15 if that deal was still on table, but there would be some cost, I'd assume we'd have to put up a fence or barrier or something and then put rocks or mulch or something, I can guess.
I, I don't know what the actual engineering requirements would be, but you'd need to barricade it in two spots, similar to like the barricade on Hill Road for ashtrays or fire trucks. If you want it, be, have fire trucks able to access it, should they need that, you'd want to build a structure at the other end, and some surface where the residents who do walk there, going to the walk ring or whatever, can, you can still walk on it. Anyway, this is where we are and rich if possible, here's what I'd like to recommend. I'd like, I'd like for us to keep the dialogue open with Ed King at the township, and I would like some time to get directly involved myself with some other avenues, perhaps through elected officials, through IDOT. I don't have any magic bullet, I'm not saying I know somebody who can help out, but I'm willing to try, like to be able to work the phone a little bit and see if there's any way that I can get ahold of some people who could perhaps get involved and throw some support our way in the township's way there to get IDOT to go with that. And I would appreciate supportive trustees. It's winter, nobody's going to pave the street, it's, it's going to be, you know, what it is right now. And I can't guarantee a timeline, you know, that I can get it done by next month or this fall, maybe not till next spring, but I, I would like the opportunity to get involved with that and to, and to work on it. And if anything, you know, we're going to, whether it's today or even six months from now, be in the same spot anyhow, and we can make that decision. Obviously, hopefully with the township doing, if they do roads every summer, then we'd like to be able to see if we, if we can facilitate the transfer, they take it, fine. If not, maybe we can, if they bid it out with that project, maybe it won't be $30,000, maybe some less, I don't know, but we can decide at that time. So, you know, I'm not going to look for a motion, is there any disagreement with that on the board? We'll, we'll work on it, if we're rich, and Mr. King, we can tap it and see if we can change IDOT's mind. Right, that's all I have, that's an update on 65th, is that sufficient for your purposes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next order of business is finance committee. Last month, I had recommended that we go forward with giving an ordinance prepared that would create a finance committee that would allow for participation by two residents along with our two finance trustees, trustee Schnoffler and trustee O'Loughlin, and our two village staff, Chief Lonzo and David Brink, to work on the budget process. And a suggestion was made at that meeting by trustee Wittenberg about looking into some, what other towns do with commissions and committees, and having them do the bulk of the work. Chief Lonzo and I met with trustee Wittenberg a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed it. And at any level, there's always going to be staff involvement. We're a small town and it's the same two people. And I, I think we, we came to a conclusion that rather than duplicating the work, we could, having a commission, then, was it commission committee or, then up to the board, to eliminate one of those, and just have this, what I'm going to call a finance committee and go forward, ask them to work on the budget process. We have not had one before. I don't, I, I think there's still some people that have some sentiment that it's not necessary, but I'm open to trying it. And so I would like to suggest again that we establish a finance committee with the two residents, two trustees, and two village staff to work on the budget process. I've had some input from various trustees that include a number of recommendations in terms of what role they're going to do, and what qualifications they should have, and a lot of specifics. I personally don't agree with that approach for the first time. I think that the idea behind this is to have resident input in the budget process, and I think working on the budget process, and I think I will, is, is what would be helpful to the village as I envision it. And I would like to be able to go forward along those lines for this first time, for this first year. Can always come back if it works great, and we can expand it to include other suggested input. And who knows, maybe the people that end up on the committee will have particular expertises which will lend themselves to different areas of finance in the village. So that, that's where I am. There's, let's, let's start with this general but focused approach to, they're going to help us work on the budget. In terms of qualifications, I have solicited, I have it on the, on the website now, it'll be out in smoke signals, and I'm asking anybody here, or if you know anybody who's interested in volunteering to be on this committee, to submit a resume to me, and send it to the admin@indianheadpark-cashil.gov email, or drop a written copy off during business hours or out in the Dropbox out front. And to do that, I close the business on Friday, November 8. And I will go through that and look for two good people to sit, and I'm sure we have more than that, but obviously, not everybody that submits is going to be selected, and I'll try to do my best to make two good recommendations for the board's approval to sit on such a committee. I'm not going to require people to have any specific qualifications, and make it open to all the residents. I think preferably somebody with a CPA, I mean, you know, if I was going to say, here's what you've got to have, a CPA, some municipal finance background would be appropriate. But we don't articulate requirements for other positions, including trustee or village president. We don't say you have to be a trustee for eight years before you can be village president, or you have to have served at least eight years on other outstanding committees in the village for eight years before you can become a trustee. So with that in mind, I would like to, you know, I'll open it to people. But this is the point where we were in September, and I was going to entertain a motion that we direct council to prepare an ordinance establishing a finance committee along the lines of what I just summarized. Trustees' comments, questions, input? Trustee Schnoffler?
As I said at the last meeting, I think, I don't think we need a finance committee, however, I'm willing to go with this plan and try it, see how it works, and if it works fine, if it doesn't, then we go another route. I fully agree, but we should, at least the first time around, keep strictly a committee to work with the budget. If we get into stuff, and dealing with bond issues and streets and things like that, I don't think, I personally am not qualified to get into the bond market business, and I don't think probably anybody in this room is, I don't know, I shouldn't say that, I guess, but I think that's a whole totally different ballgame. As we're going to talk about, throw bond issues or bonds or sewer and water, I think that's a totally different program here, and it shouldn't be tied with the committee that's got the budget, at least not for the first year startup.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And I just would say, I would agree with your, your position on the qualification. I, you know, as we try to invite more people to be involved, I think it would be somewhat offensive to say to someone, well, you're not, you don't have a finance degree, so you don't even, you're not even worthy of applying for this position. I think we open it up to everyone in the village, and everyone should have an opportunity to submit their resume and for you to consider.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Guys, I think your idea is, is right on, I like it.
Okay, then the chair would entertain a motion to direct council to prepare a finance committee consistent with the parameters that I articulated in a general fashion, if you can do that. If you can't, all right, okay. All right, who will make such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Bailey for a second?
Second.
Second by trustee O'Loughlin. I mean, voice for this group, now?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote? Okay, great, motion carries, so we'll take care of it.
Yes.
Okay. Third item is a purchases ordinance, and this has its genesis with input from trustee Wittenberg, who had requested that we change the one that we have, and I don't want to attribute words to her that she didn't say, but it was my initial understanding. I think as it boils down, and I'll ask trustee Wittenberg to explain further, the concern was that the village can spend money without having a, at some level, without getting a vote by the village board. Initially, it, it looked like the trustee was asserting that it was $20,000, and again, this is not what she said, this is what my understanding was, that if it was under $20,000, we didn't need to have board action on it. If it was over $20,000, but then we did, we also had a discussion about that, and it turns out that $20,000 is the amount that if, if we're going to do something and it's over $20,000, we have to go out for bid. And if, you know, if we take one bid and that's all we get, we need a three-fifths board vote, I believe it is, super majority on the board to take the one bid.
Well, if you're to waive bids, it's two-thirds.
Oh, waive bids, okay, excuse me.
It's only for public work stretches.
Okay. But in any event, and again, as I understand it, the suggestion is, is that we have an ordinance that would establish a limit above which it would need board approval before an expenditure. Now, historically, the village has no such ordinance and have not had one for 54 years. I'm not aware of any problem that has caused, other than we seem to find the level at which we know we need to go out for bids, or if we need to waive a bid and, and we have a vote on it, and those things have prevailed. In terms of authorizing a purchase, an analysis that I have that I would apply is that when we pass a budget, and if the budget includes the purchase of a police car, and in the budget, we attribute approximately $25,000 to that, and thereafter, we approve appropriations ordinance, we, we stated we were going to spend this money, we've authorized the expenditure, chief can go out and give bids on police car and, and buy it, except, the reality is, the way it works, the chief goes out and gets three bids, and he says, okay, the Chrysler is 24, and the Ford is 26, and the GM product is 27.5. But we like this one better than that one, and here's the one we recommend, and what do you folks want? So it comes to the board anyway, that's how it's worked. That's my understanding. I, I would like to hear trustee Wittenberg, if you would like to address it, why, you know, in particular for all of us, why, why you think we need it, and if you're aware of any problems that we've had, or any, any problems that have occurred by us not getting.
No, I'm not asserting that there's been issues with procurement for the purchasing of services. I think it's best in this day and age, in municipal government environment, to have a purchase of services agreement that specifically gives our village administrator the power to do certain things regarding purchasing, so he or she may be directed in a very specific fashion in regards to what he or she can do, and what, where he or she may need additional guidance from the village board. So the one that I specifically was interested in was one that I had seen in Western Springs code regarding the purchases not exceeding $10,000, where you have the ability to spend up to that point if it is in the budget, and if it's been approved in the appropriations budget. There's also a similar provision in the bridge budget. There are many budgets that have purchasing parts in section, usually it's in section of one, where it's under the administrative section, and many of those are the strong clarification area. The second would be emergency purchases, which you had brought up as an area of concern, and that would not limit emergency purchases necessarily, if it was something that was needed, you know, to a $10,000 or around that, and I think we can discuss these things. But that there's some latitude that the village manager has, but it's not unlimited. Okay, so that we are, there's some guardrails around what we, what we do in our code, and that there's some language that puts some guardrails around it. Then the third thing would be the purchasing, the purchases in contracts for that provision. I don't believe we have a, we have a provision for contracts over 20, I believe, as you said, but I think in the purchases ordinance, it can identify those contracting guidelines in there. So I was interested in not asserting that there's been problems, but putting more structure around the process, so our village administration can understand, you know, the, the process in which we're going to go forward. I think this is commonplace today, and I think in, not to micromanage, it's not what we're trying to do, but we're trying to create guardrails and checks and balances with our fiduciary presence and our fiduciary future. That's why I recommend it.
Trustees' questions? Trustee Dench?
If we use the $10,000 as a mark, how many approximate purchases, frankly, you say, are over $10,000 in a year?
Not very many, just off the top, when we went out and did a new copy machine to do. do faxing and everything, it touched about $10,000.
But.
Other than an emergency water main break, it really gets complicated, but that would be covered. So over, within a year, there's not very many.
Like five?
If that, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm not assuming you're.